I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion on the agenda that I'll notice that there is in addition, and that is item, where are we at? Item B under other business, and that is the short-term lease Raymount Wrecker service.
So moved.
Seconded.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? And what is their new name, or the name that is that?
This is the correct name.
That's the correct, okay.
Yeah. They're operating out of there as Raymount Wrecker. I'm sorry.
All right, very good. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, agenda's approved. We will now move on to public comments. If there's anybody here from the public that wishes to address the board on something that is not an agenda item, either anybody in the room or on Zoom. All right, hearing none, we will now move on to the Years of Service Award to employees with 20 or more years of service.
Today, we have an award for Angela Graham of Public Health for 25 years of service.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Sarah Mergenthaller. I am here to introduce Angie. So I'm from Blackhawk County Public Health. So I just want to say to Angie, congratulations on the remarkable 25-year work anniversary. Fun fact, Angie just shared with me this morning that she started in 1986 at Blackhawk County Country View. So that's awesome. But most recently, Angie has worked directly with the Public Health Department for our clients who are treated for TB in the last 25 years, and is a trusted subject matter expert in TB. Angie exemplifies our core value outward mindset in Blackhawk County Public Health by putting the clients and community needs above her own. And she is an effective and empathetic communicator, has a keen awareness of how decisions made in her care plan could impact a client's livelihood. She's an avid patient advocate and has unwavering commitment to think, test, treat, and TB in our county. So I'm grateful for Angie's impactful mentorship to me, but also within the Public Health Department and the county.
Well, thank you so much. If you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to.
Thank you, Sarah. And it really has been an honor to serve the citizens of Blackhawk County. Public health nursing is a unique opportunity to have a positive impact on a very diverse communities. And my hope is that nurses younger than myself will consider this rewarding area of nursing. The work is definitely challenging, but I believe that it is definitely worth all of that, and I'm glad that I did.
Thank you. We know that nurses have a lot of choices of where to go, and we appreciate that you've made your career with Blackhawk County.
Thank you.
All right, were there any more Years of Service Award today?
No, there were none.
All right, all right, very good. We will now move on to, we've got two proclamations. The first proclamation is a resolution to proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Is there a motion?
For somebody to make it up for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I believe Grant has the proclamation.
Yes. Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor, but also for the family, friends, and community of the survivor. And whereas since no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors, inform Blackhawk County, on behalf of all staff and citizens of Blackhawk County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence.
Are there a few folks from Riverview here today? Do you just want to mention your event that you've got coming up?
Oh, yes. So for the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area, can you hear me okay? Okay, so we have a Luncheon of Light and Evening of Light every April. This year in the Cedar Falls-Waterloo area, it's going to be our Luncheon of Light, which will be April 19th from 11 to 2. And our guest speaker this year is Chanel Miller, and that will be at the BNV in Cedar Falls. And tickets are for sale, so that will be on the Riverview Center website. I'm sure it's on our Facebook page as well, and then the other social media.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, this is a resolution. There's no further questions or discussion. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next proclamation, this is a resolution to proclaim the week of April 1st, 2024, as National Public Health Week. And I believe we have, you want to come up and speak to this?
Hi, my name is Sarah Mergenthaller. So I'm here just to present the proclamation for the week of April 1st as National Public Health Week. The theme that is adopted by Blackhawk County Public Health for National Public Health Week is protecting, connecting, and thriving. We are public health. And one of the goals of National Public Health Week is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the US and working towards health equity. So we're proposing for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to support the goals and ideals of National Public Health Week and recognize the efforts of local, state, and national public health professionals in protecting people from health hazards, promoting healthy behaviors, and preventing disease.
Excellent. And is there a proclamation to read or?
Yes, there is.
All right.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded?
Whereas the week of April 1st, 2024, is National Public Health Week, whereas the theme adopted by Blackhawk County Public Health for National Public Health Week is protecting, connecting, and thriving, we are all public health. Whereas the goal of National Public Health Week is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and working toward health equity. Whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers and public health professionals on issues that are important to improving the health of the people of the United States. Whereas a strong public health workforce means that public health can make sure food and water are safe, track diseases, stop outbreaks, prepare for public health emergencies, provide child and maternal health care, and monitor data essential to public health. Whereas each 10% increase in local public health spending contributes to a 6.9% decrease in infant deaths, 3.2% decrease in deaths related to cardiovascular disease, 1.4% decrease in deaths due to diabetes, and 1.1% decrease in cancer-related deaths. Whereas racial and ethnic minority populations continue to experience disparities in burden of illness and death, and Blackhawk County Public Health works to ensure that people in our community have equitable opportunities and resources to lead healthier, more fulfilling, and longer lives. Whereas vaccination is one of the most significant public health achievements in history and has resulted in substantial decreases in the number of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths associated with vaccine-preventable diseases, and healthcare costs associated with vaccine-preventable diseases. Whereas public health encourages communities across the United States to change their way, the way they care for their health by avoiding tobacco use, eating healthier, increasing physical activity, and preventing unintentional injuries at home and in the workplace. Whereas studies show that small strategic investments in disease prevention can result in significant savings in healthcare costs. Whereas access to pediatric oral health care is at a crisis point, with 1 in 3 of Blackhawk County children screened through the department's Eye Smile Program having tooth decay. Whereas funding for childhood lead poisoning prevention programs should be sustained as there is no safe level of lead exposure, and the effects of lead poisoning are irreversible. Whereas a continued commitment to funding and education is necessary to meet the growing mental health needs of our community, to reduce stigma related to obtaining help, improve access to mental health services, and address linkages with the foundational supports of our communities that lead to reduced crime as well as food, economic, and housing stability. Whereas public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the health sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials, and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. Whereas efforts to adequately support public health in the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors supports the goals and ideals of National Public Health Week and recognizes the efforts of local, state, and national public health professionals in protecting people from health hazards, promoting healthy behaviors, and preventing disease.
Well, thank you, Grant. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. And thank you to all of our dedicated public health workers. Next is a presentation on the logo/brand launch for Blackhawk County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gabby Hewitt, marketing coordinator, I remembered. I'm gonna call this up in the beginning. There we go. Oops, Al, I did it. I forgot to share. Okay. That's teaser. So I started thinking about the process that this has been, and I went back and listened to some prior Board of Supervisor meetings, all the way back March 2023 is when you all started talking about the rebrand. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight where you've been so far. Went out for RFP in April of 2023. The contract was awarded June 2023 to Corkery &amp; Corkery, and Chris is here with us today. And then we started, you all started surveying the Blackhawk County staff in the community October through December to find out what people felt about the current logo. So it's been a minute. So once the process began, we gathered a rebrand committee. So I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that was on the rebrand committee. Supervisors Lynda Leyland and Tavis Hall, Al Yu from IT, Amanda Fezremeyer from HR, Grant Veder and Karen Scholwalter from Auditor and Elections Offices, Sandy Smith from the Recorder's Office, Michelle Weiner and Lori Wermers from the Board Office, Roy Giving in Maintenance, and Ryan Brennan from Engineer Roads Department, and Ashley Bass from Treasures. And through this process, we considered a lot of variations. Chris gave us a lot of options to look through, and we talked about what we liked, what we didn't like, and we wanted to make sure that we were considering the needs of all the Blackhawk County departments that would be using the logo. So in the old logo, some of our survey responses were that it was an outdated design, that it didn't inspire people, that the logo was too literal and detailed, and felt like it had served its purpose. I think it had been around for about 10 years. The things they told us they wanted in a new logo was blue and green. Why, everyone pretty much was on the blue and green for preferences, and that it should convey strength, trust, and pride. And so ta-da. Here's our new logo. This is just the BHC on its own. It symbolizes the rich heritage, our roots to our fields and streams, and a nod to our Native American heritage with the sun rising in the horizon. It's the modern design that represents progress and inclusivity, appealing to all members of the community regardless of background, and represents cultural diversity and unity among hardworking people who live, work, and play in Blackhawk County. And here is how it looks with the Blackhawk County. And the goal for the logo really is to be, as I said, modern, a clean look, approachable, and to help build trust in the community and be recognizable, more recognizable in the community. One of the things that we know, I think I told you, we have like 11 Facebook pages, or at least, yeah, a lot. And so we wanted to make sure that people would still be identified and look like part of the county even if they had their own social media profile. So we, the icon is able to serve as a standalone symbol that represents the full county, but ensures flexibility and strengthening in our branding. And so, like I've worked with veterans already on doing their new challenge coin, and they're going to use their icon, and then we'll be adding these logos to the social media profiles. And then the Roads Department plans to use their icon on their vehicles. So one of the things we really want, and we have, I think Amanda told me, over 300, almost 400 staff, so we really wanted to get staff involved. So I really want to thank the board for their support on the budget that we requested for this brand launch. It allowed us to purchase t-shirts for the staff, which a lot of people are wearing today. Thanks for wearing them. And some branded swag. We did notebooks, pens, you have them in front of you, lanyards, stickers. And then we do have a online store that staff will be able to order more branded materials at their own cost. We will begin a Proud to Be BHC Staff Spotlight Campaign this week, and we had so many great responses. We'll be doing that through the spring for sure. And if people still want to respond, they sure can. The online store is open through April 30th. And then part of our, let's see which one, yeah, part of our online, or our external rollout, like I mentioned, the staff spotlights, and now we'll begin focusing on telling the stories of our department. We really wanted to be able to brand them with the new logo. And so I've already been talking to some of the departments on stories that we can tell in these next few months coming up. And also, if you're sitting at Stoplight at any of the digital billboards around town, Lamar Billboards graciously donated a billboard this week so that we could have this Proud to Be BHC on the billboard. I saw it on my way in this morning, so I took it as a sign that this would go well. The other things that we're doing internally for our rollout is a brand website that includes letterheads, business cards, that's to come, and the business card's not quite on there yet, email signatures, other print needs a staff has let us know that they need, and a usage guide for the logo. And now I want to show you a video that Chris Corkery did. Do you want to say anything before I show it?
Okay.
So this will be a video that we're going to launch today on our social media. So I did want to give supervisors a chance to say anything, comment on the logo process. It's been really fun that this, I've been here three months, and this is a big chunk of what I've been working on, and it's been a really great opportunity. So I thank you for allowing me to do that. And if anybody would like to say anything about how they feel about the new logo or the rebrand.
I think it's really exciting, and I know as a devout fan of RuPaul's Drag Race, I know that you've never been.
Big reveal.
But it's, I don't know, it's just cool. I think it's something that our employees will feel pride in, and we can feel pride in, you know, and represent the county well and create visibility for the great work that everybody does here every day.
I think, you know, I would just add that this is certainly the logo. You know, the interesting thing about branding is that it's more about your values. And, you know, over the 16 months-ish that I've been here, you know, I've come to understand, maybe with a deeper appreciation, the pride that our staff take in their work, the level of accessibility and approachability, and sort of the forward-thinking nature of their work. And I think it's really, it's great to have a logo that reflects that accessibility and that forward-thinking.
Anyone else?
Let's see who gets the first tattoo.
I bet on you. Well, I have left a little bit of the swag at your desk. We've encouraged staff to come to the Board Office and to come and get their new swag and their t-shirts, and just really kind of promoting the new logo and the direction forward. And I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Gabby. I think for all your efforts of pulling all this together. I know you were saying yesterday, you know, she kind of got in on the tail end of it, but you've really got the load that you've kind of carried since you got on. So thanks to Chris for, I said, working with us as a team. Thanks for all the efforts that have gone into this. But thank you also for what you're doing to get this out there.
Yeah, Chris has been fantastic. We've kind of had reiterations over and over and nailing down the details and stuff, but thank you. It has been a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh!
I was gonna say the big reveal.
That's for later.
That wasn't in my notes.
Oh, cool.
So this, sorry, one more thing. This is the sign, and I know you can't see it on the camera, but this is the sign that will replace the board sign, and that will be up by the April 9th meeting. And the backing is just protective. It will just be a frosted plexiglass.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Very cool.
What's gonna happen to that one?
I don't know.
Somebody else's tattoo.
We should auction.
Yeah. There you go, there you go. Be determined. Whatever Mike says we can do with it.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. All right, next, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and let the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? So?
Good morning, Board. Our bill payment today is small, which we like. The total is $253,976.30. And of that, out of the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, we have $297.66. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions?
All right, Board, any questions? All right, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief update on the gravel roads. Of course, the weather will be determining a lot of their condition over the next few weeks. We are getting some rain, much-needed rain. But I've told you how we have been pulling the shoulders in, removing that material off the shoulder, and getting it back onto the roadway too, so that we can ensure water drains off into the ditches. So there's a lot of lime, and there's a lot of dirt in that material that is now on the gravel road. And with this moisture, with this rain, it's gonna make the roads slimy because there's been lime and dirt in there. So I may get some complaints on that. They are pretty ugly over the next few weeks with this rain. Some potholes will be developing, I'm sure. We will get out there as we can with, you know, when we get a few drier days. So please pass any complaints you have on to us, and can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facility Director. Just a quick update on the remodel project here at the courthouse. We are gonna start asbestos abatement on Wednesday on second floor here. It'd be in the former Auditor's Department. I did want to note as a consequence to that, we will have to shut the ladies restroom on second floor down for about two days. We're gonna be utilizing an exhaust outlet that's located in that restroom for the abatement process, so just wanted to mention that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads in the room or on Zoom wish to provide an update this morning? All right. Hearing none, we will now move on to the minutes approved for the March 26, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The minutes are approved. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution unless there's anything in the way which is to pull out for discussion or debate.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We'll now move on to other business. Item A, this is a motion to authorize and direct the Chair to sign the fiscal year 2025 Iowa Department of Transportation Secondary Road Budget and Five-Year Construction Plan as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Kathy?
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to present our five-year plan to you. As you know, we are required to submit this to the Iowa DOT per the Code of Iowa by April 15th of every year. I usually put together a slideshow to show you what our future projects are for the next five years. So I've given you that information by email, as well as a handout in front of you, and I will take a few minutes to go through the projects and our rationale for our budget and our projects over the next five years. So I just wanted to refresh your memory and update the values of, the dollar values that we receive from our different sources of funding throughout the year. One big source of funding for us, for counties, is the farm-to-market system. We are currently receiving about $1.5 million on a fiscal year basis from the FM, and that, of course, comes from the DOT, comes from road use tax funds, licensing fees, that type of thing. We do also receive federal funds. A direct allocation would be to our bridge program. The Iowa DOT has worked with the county engineers over the years to have a formula based on deficient bridges, populations, number of bridges, deficient decree, that type of thing. It's a complex number, but currently, we're getting about $538,000 a year from, as federal pass-through funds. In the past three or four years, that has been higher, but so far, the current federal highways, the administration has not said that we will be getting any bonus funding. So the last few years, it's been closer to $700,000 or $750,000. So this year, we're back to that normal allocation, and it's about $540,000 that we are receiving. Another type of federal allocation we get, as you know, is through the RTA, the MPO. We meet with them. It's usually a competitive process where locally, we are competing for federal funds. In this five-year program, we are projecting to receive about $1.8 million in federal funds through those programs. And then moving on to the secondary road fund, again, this is our biggest source of funding that we receive from the state, and that would be, of course, through the gas tax, licensing fees, those types of things. We are receiving about, that should be $3.8 million. Excuse me. That would be $4.5 million from the road use tax fund. And then, of course, another portion of our secondary road fund would be the transfers that you give us, and that would be $3.8 million. that you give us and that would be $3.8 million this year. And so that all goes into our secondary road fund. Another source of funding would be permitting going into that fund. And then the local option sales tax, which I believe is expected to be about $1.8 million for fiscal year 25. I will say that we would like to be more strategic or more, take advantage of more of our funds. We will probably run more projects through our FM funds. The FM fund in the future, that account allows counties to be very flexible. Money can be spent on, on farm-to-market roads. We have a lot of farm-to-market roads. It's most of our paved road system. It includes a few gravel roads even. There is a lot of flexibility with FM funds. You can spend that money on construction projects, of course, but you can also spend it on preventative maintenance and maintenance items such as pavement markings, crack sealing. We'll probably start running our crack sealing projects, contracts through the FM fund. We are hoping to shift money into that fund so that we can maximize, we're trying to save money, of course, for our new building, a new proposed shop building. And there'll be more to tell you as we go forward with those projects. So this is our proposed budget. It's very similar to the one we submitted to you earlier in the year, the ones you've pretty much discussed. These are just some final figures and how they compare our revenues and our expenditures. You can see that we are expending about $60,000 more than what we're projecting as revenue. And of course, we've told you how there has typically been a very conservative number given to us from the Iowa DOT, from the road use tax funds. Typically, that's been about $325,000 more than what we put into our budget. So we think we're gonna be fine with that overrun of $60,000 more than what we've, we are receiving from our revenues. That should build our fund balance up. We are projecting to have a fund balance of about $4.8 million by the end of fiscal year 25. I just want to run through a couple of slides here. This data is older data on our roadways because the Iowa DOT only gives us, only collects condition data such as distress data, such as cracking, rutting, the ride. I've told you how we only get that collected on a four-year cycle. We get, we analyze that data. We feel that there haven't been any drastic changes. We still have many, many roads in very good condition. And I feel like that is a direct correlation between the amount of money that you are transferring to us at the high percentages of 100% and 95%. Of course, that's keeping our roads in good condition, the majority of our roads in good condition. As we resurface a road, of course, an older roadway is falling. Our pavements are aging, so we do feel that this graph is pretty representative. The next set of data will be available in, I believe, 2025, so then we can update this graph. This is also our bridge conditions, but it's last year's data because our bridge inspection cycle has just recently been completed and we haven't been able to get into our database to update that. Federal highways has a lock on that for about another month. So we can come back to you and update you based on our inspections on what these numbers would actually be. We haven't closed any bridges in the last year. We haven't posted any bridges other than the one on Klein Road. So these numbers are, again, very representative of what they were last year. So let's take a quick look at the projects for the next five years in the plan. I'll just briefly go through those. In fiscal year 25, there's, of course, resurfacings, bridge work. One of the notable projects on here would be Highway 218. We are collaborating with the Iowa DOT. They are resurfacing Highway 218. That's their project. They've asked us to, if we would like some road approaches, our gravel road approaches that tie into Highway 218. I've told you in the past how important that is for, for us, for the public, to have at our gravel road approaches that tie in with our gravel roads, to have that paved approach of about 50 feet. They're offering to do, to include that work. We pay for the asphalt, of course. So we're budgeting $90,000 for that work and that will be done next, next year in 2025. Then Viking Road Project, we've kept you updated on Cedar Falls. We own half of that road, the north side of it. This is in their industrial area. They are improving that roadway at a cost of, I think, $3 or $4 million. Our share is $350,000. We are anticipating to pay that in next fiscal year. They have not started that, that contract yet, or they are about to begin, I believe. So those are a couple of the highlights. Any questions about next year's projects? Moving on to 26, we see one of those projects that we are receiving money from the MPO here, $450,000 on, on our Donald Street project. We're also anticipating doing this project in conjunction with the City of Waterloo, so we would be receiving about $580,000 is what we're projecting for their share of the work on Donald Street from Sage Road to Raymount Road. We will be resurfacing that roadway. Again, we have bridge projects, bridge replacements, two local bridge crews projects. We would like to try a new project on the Eldora Road project. We've been looking at different types of prefabricated bridges, so we'll tell you more about that as we get closer to that timeline. Moving ahead to FY '27 projects, we will be resurfacing Independence Hole Gate, Osage, from State Highway 281 over to the Blackhawk County Buchanan County Line. We have a large project on Washburn Road that we have received, already received money from the RT, excuse me, that is from the MPO, the $1.3 million. That's from MPO for our Washburn Road project in 2027. And then more bridge replacements, of course, with one being a local bridge crew project. Moving on to fiscal year 28, we will be resurfacing Wagner Road, a couple more bridge projects, one being a bridge crew project. And of course, I forgot to mention, we do have right-of-way associated with these, most of these projects, or we include $50,000 worth of right-of-way. Primarily, that would be for our bridge projects, acquiring small pieces of land or having to pay for temporary easements to do those bridge replacements. And then, excuse me, the last year, fiscal year 29, we're anticipating a large project and this would be at the University Avenue, the Ridgeway intersection area. And this, if you're familiar with, this is in the western portion of the county, on the north side of US 20. That interchange, our westernmost interchange here in the county, there's a four-way stop. We're strongly thinking about a roundabout at that location. We're, we like that idea of a roundabout. We, we need to get some, some, some grants. We're hoping to be able to get some grants for this project, perhaps safety money. We anticipate probably paying for an engineering study, perhaps in fiscal year 27, to validate a roundabout and maybe to help us find sources of money for a roundabout. And then again, two bridges that same year. This is just a summary of the, all the types of fundings that we are projecting to receive for the next five years, the total being about $24 million. The last total in our last five-year program was about $18 million, so we are showing an increase of, of funding being spent on our projects in the next five years. Here's the map that we will put on the website. I've given you a copy of that. It shows all the projects. This comes out of our GIS system. We've got it color-coded for the fiscal year and the projects. And that is about it. Can I answer any questions specifically about our five-year plan? I would, I would recommend that you please, that you please approve our plan and we will get that submitted along with our budget to the Iowa DOT.
Any questions, Board? We appreciate all the, the good work that your department is doing. All right, I believe that there is a motion, correct? Okay.
Yep.
All right, this is a motion. If there's no further discussion or questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to a motion to approve entering into a short-term lease with Raymount Wrecker Service Incorporated for the building located at 829 Sycamore, Waterloo, Iowa, at a rate of $1,000 for a 60-day period ending May 31st, 2024, and subject to providing proof of required insurance coverage.
So moved.
Second.
Is that at a rate of 1,000 per month?
So it'll be at a rate of $1,000 for the 60-day period. If for whatever reason after, they remained in there after, it would have to be negotiated at that point, but the, but we have a right to evict.
All right. Yeah, I, I'm not interested in going beyond May 31st.
I think that was just, like I said, something to allow them to stay in business and so we did to get out and do their phones and the business.
Sure.
But yeah, we're, and they did allow us to, to get in. I think, Rory, I don't know if you want to speak to that, as far as an exchange of keys or getting in to do the contracting work and all of that as well, so they.
Yeah, we actually formally closed on it yesterday, April 1st, but as of that date, now we do have access or will have access. I don't actually have keys yet, but I plan on working that out here yet this week. We can utilize it. We're gonna be kind of strategic in how we do that because we know we have a lot of work ahead of us with regards to electrical, sprinkler and so forth. So we may end up putting our plows in there, our goal is to get all of our equipment and any equipment that Kathy may have out on the Union Road Shop and get that out of there and get that emptyed up. So that's gonna be our first priority. And then during this time, we'll be working on obtaining bids for some of those projects I just mentioned, so.
It's been kind of a good working relationship, I think, since we started as far as them letting us have access to the building and us trying to work with them as well.
Absolutely.
So you, so we close on a building on April 1st and we still don't have the keys?
No.
I'm just messing with you.
Yeah. Yesterday, yesterday was kind of an odd day. Didn't get over there, but yeah, yeah. Virtual close.
Uh huh, okay, all right.
All right. All right, this is a motion. If there's no further discussion or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Next is discussion, possible board action, authorize Blackhawk County Public Health to submit an application for the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services fiscal year 2025, RFA for County Substance Abuse Project on behalf of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I know Caitlin couldn't be here today, but I sat in with Caitlin on the, one of the informational presentations and it was really kind of a wide area of things that they're, they're willing to fund. I thought that support of peer support sounded like something that, that we would be interested in. It would most likely be partnering with, with Pathways, I believe. I'm not sure if you want to speak a little more to it?
Sarah Mergenthaller here. So the information that was passed to me from Caitlin is that, yeah, the intent is to pass the funds to Pathways and we're still working out on the details for it, but this grant is supposed to support the substance abuse program such as education, prevention, referral or post-treatment services.
And there is, it's a $10,000 grant. There's a $20,000 match that we have to provide, but opioid settlement funds are, are allowed to be used for, for the match.
And so then it's a total of 30 that'll come for these services than ours.
Right.
Okay, as well, great. And, and the timeline for how?
It's, it was something like the 11th or so, it's pretty.
Yeah, so the application due date is April 11th and it's submitted through Iowa Grants.
And as far as receiving the award or do we have any idea when they're doing that?
That, that I don't remember from the.
I don't have that information in front of me.
That's all right. Just curious if we could get it going.
Yeah.
So thank you, thank you.
Yeah, but I was, I thought with, since we're allowed to use opioid settlements, it was a good, have, have win for us, huh? All right. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries. Next, discussion on department relocations and renovations.
All right, Rory Giving, Facilities Director again. First of all, thank you for allowing me to get this on the agenda. As you know, I had sent an email out last week, early last week, just kind of summarizing some of the discussions that I've had with some of you and some department heads throughout, throughout the courthouse particularly. And I think the goal here, at least my goal, is to get this out in front of, of you all and looking for not any answers today per se, but maybe some direction moving forward, whether that's strategic planning. I know we've been talking about getting that formally going or further future work sessions. But basically what we're looking at is, we've had several conversations about reorganization within, within the courthouse. For an example, looking at the Board of Supervisors area and possibly combining HR with that. There are some initial concerns with that with regards to square footage requirements or needs. Believe it or not, we would have to get a little bit creative if we were to go that route with square footage. There is some privacy discussions that we've had with combining HR up in this area. We've even branched out and started talking a little bit about Engineering Department and whether they get their new maintenance shop over at Secondary Roads and what that might look like. So, so yeah, a lot of, a lot of discussions, a lot of, of different angles on how to address some of the space needs here at the courthouse. And so really what, what I'm looking for today or hoping for is that we can maybe formally set up some sort of strategic plan to look at this because one of the struggles that we're having in our department is we do have several projects with regards to ARPA that's on our plate right now and those do have some deadlines that we do have to meet in order to fulfill the requirements for that spending. And so I, I want my focus to be on that and making sure that those projects go through smoothly, but I also appreciate the conversations that I have with you all and some of the department heads and the needs that, of the courthouse here. So rather than just, I guess, having these conversations, I would like to come up with some sort of a system where we can really make some progress and, and I'm assuming that probably would be a strategic planning committee of some sort, but just wanted to throw that out there.
I was gonna say timelines. I know we know ARPA dollars have the timelines and we have quite a few things going on in that right now. We're, are we starting to feel comfortable that we'll meet those timelines?
I, I feel comfortable with, with the ARPA based on what I'm hearing back from some of our professional services. A little concerned on like the HVAC project. We still have quite a few objectives that we need to meet on that one, but I'm being assured that, you know, our goal is to get contracts signed and so that means we have to have the projects designed and, and sent out for bid. So I am getting some reassurance from professional services, but each day that goes by, you know, that's just another day. Not only ARPA projects, but we had a pretty healthy list of capital projects too for this year that we're trying to chip away at. So it is a pretty extraordinary year for us, just kind of combating all of those timelines.
I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to us at least have a work session too of like the projects and where they're at and the status and as far as, I know we said there's timelines at 24th, December 24th, we have to sign, but then we have the two years to get them completed, I guess, too, and we have a pretty big one. I know with Pinecrest facility.
Yeah, my, my goal is to actually have something similar to that to present to you. Unfortunately, the last few business days here, we've had some issues and just didn't have the time to put that together, but yeah. But yeah, I agree that, you know, if we can get a really good feeling on where we're at and where we'll be, and then maybe throw in some of these discussions and see where that lands us. I feel like the conversations that we've had, there's a lot of win-win, whether it's getting folks out of the basement or, you know, even all the way to Consolidated Communications, maybe some different thoughts there. So they're all great ideas. It's just, you know, I think we just really need to hone in on that. And I threw some dollar amounts at you, too, just to kind of give you an idea. Those are based off of some engineering estimates that we had received on other projects. So I basically took those and took the space that we had here that we were looking at and came up with that dollar amount, just to kind of give you some ideas.
I don't know. What are the boards, I mean, to me, I like the work session idea, just to get the information all out to us and have an opportunity to discuss and ask our questions and that type of thing. But I think we've all talked about strategic planning and being an exercise for us soon, probably. And these buildings might be one of those areas. I know we talked about limiting, or they talked about screening, kind of the ideas down. This one seems like a rather large, like I said, project, but yeah.
I guess when I think of strategic planning, I think more in terms of our general direction, not necessarily building. I think there's value in having a strategic.
Plan for this.
Plan for this, but I don't think we need, I don't think it makes sense to combine those two. I think there's value in separating.
No, from a, yeah, perspective of the supervisors and the direction of the county, I guess that. No, I understand that, too. I just thought this may be one of those smaller areas that we need to strategically plan on.
Right, right. It's big enough, I think, that it would take a group to kind of put their heads together and figure out what direction we want to go.
Well, there's a lot of moving pieces, some of which we don't know, right? If dollars are going to mount up the way that we're anticipating with engineering, if that needs to be another mechanism.
Is the feeling that the current kind of space needs committee is just kind of too large to do this kind of planning with?
I think that, you know, the current space committee could be an outlet that we could use, but really, that's looking at all of our facilities. You know, we have members from Pinecrest on that as well. If we're looking at specifically departments that are here at the courthouse, maybe we can shorten that or make that a little bit smaller, I think would be more productive.
And am I sort of hearing that you're ultimately wanting us to sort of give you direction of what you, right? Like, I appreciate it, I think there's also some value in just saying supervisors are wanting to move this direction, us setting the course versus.
Yeah, essentially, you know, there's so, so many good ideas out there that you have all had, and just in our conversations and passing, that I think that what I need is really, what's the appetite of the board? And which direction would you like me to really start honing in on? Or do we want to develop this smaller group and use that as our outlet to maybe define some action items, spread that out a little bit?
We may be, then I wondered, almost need a consultant or someone in the space assessment kind of thing. I'm not, maybe not for us to talk and have the discussions, but I just thought, you know, we kind of did that space assessment, and then we found out what the dollar amounts were. I forget, we said, that kind of put a stop on us right away, and then we kind of took another direction and looked at.
Yeah, it was a bit of a shock and awe when we got that dollar amount, so maybe this would be like a mini assessment. Get, you know, for an example, if we're looking at doing something on our lower level, you know, there's different options. We could look at egress windows. We could look at manufactured lighting that simulates natural lighting. We could look at reorganizing how that department looks by utilizing some of the common space and just really opening it up and giving it more of an open atmosphere. You know, and some of those are great ideas, but maybe to have somebody to, on an architect's standpoint, just kind of help draw these ideas out and, you know, keep them moving forward.
Well, on some, I like this, the three points you gave us in your email, and what I'm talking about is the relocation of the engineer's office, consolidation of human resources in the board supervisors, moving the county attorney's office space. I mean, the board could take, there's already movement on, as far as I'm concerned, with the engineer's office. They found a mechanism for funding it. It's a, the location's great, as far as I'm concerned. The board could, within a month or two, make a decision on that. And I think it's just sensible to move Kathy's offices out to that location, and then we worry about what we could utilize that space for. But the board could make a decision on that in the next month or two, and let's, then we don't have to worry about that, and we can, because there's a, there is a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of decisions we need to make.
Yeah.
At least we can take it step by step and at least take action.
And by doing that one step, would then opens us up to several different potential options.
Yeah. And maybe we discover, as we're preparing for the building out there, and I feel that the building's going to happen, I think. Maybe there are other opportunities for other departments to be involved in that endeavor as well.
If there were other, we talked about other departments, maybe be part of it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially, it's a fairly large scope, and, you know, it's involving a lot of moving parts, as you had mentioned, and I just really feel that we have some sort of a mechanism to kind of hone that in and give us, you know.
Yeah, I think maybe a small committee that's got two people from the board on, and then representation from the most impacted departments to try and, you know, flesh out a little bit more on some of these ideas and decide which ones we want more outside expertise on to help explore. So it's, does that kind of make sense for the direction?
I think that makes perfect sense, and that's something that we can get arranged, and I look forward to getting that conversation going and see where that lands.
One to start, or at least something to sum.
Right. Yeah. All right, well, if there's no other questions, thank you.
So what do we think is next steps, then, as far as you coming back to us with the committee? I mean, I know I hate to dump it on your lap, or I was going to say, but.
Who wants to be on that committee?
I'd be willing to serve on it.
Me, too.
Sounds good.
Okay. Then I would imagine, obviously, engineering, possibly HR, and we forgot the board representation and myself, so I think that would probably be a good start. We can get that arranged and get some dates put out there to kind of get that conversation going.
All right, good. So thanks, Rory.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to item 11. Any reports or information for the board?
Just a quick reminder that out in the supervisor's office for staff or whomever's here, there's a little, I don't know if it's called a reception, but grab your new branded swag.
I saw that there's cookie cake.
There's cookie cake, yeah.
Food, huh? That's fun.
All right, if there's no other.
I just have one simple, I mean, there's been some protest in town. I'm a strong supporter of protest. I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment, but these individuals that are protesting are radicals, they're doxxing city employees, they're doxxing, I think, I guess that's the term you're using, judges and putting their home addresses and stuff out there. These are radicals, utterly ridiculous, and they try to circumvent our system when they're not happy with the results of our system. A gentleman was tried and convicted by a jury of his peers, and now he wants to dox police officers, judges, jury members. I don't support their motives, their attitudes at all. As a matter of fact, they disgust me.
Thank you for sharing.
I didn't sleep well last night.
Yeah, yeah. Any other reports? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.